Ready? Call meeting to order stamps for pledge, please. Pledge, please. I need a motion to enter an executive session about personnel.
Make the motion.
Second. Motion by Stacy, second by on the board. Nancy informing that she might be late tonight, or she's gonna be late tonight, or she can make it all. Let's go to the conference room. Any come out? Are you on? Need a motion to enter an executive session.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
You have to walk on now?
I can't.
Okay, so just when I do it, I do it. Alright. Need a motion for executive, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Stacy and Kristen. That brings us to superintendent's report.
I'm gonna start by deferring to JJ, he's gonna give us a sports overview. Post in the mic so the public can hear.
Okay.
Either way.
I'll go stand side, please. Okay, first for the sports report, we're talking about winter sports. Earlier this week, Governor Cuomo said that he is not giving the go-ahead for high-risk sports, which for us is wrestling and basketball. So he didn't give an exact date of when we're gonna start, he didn't say there's gonna be no season, so he kinda left it out in the open, and we're gonna have to just play day by day. But as of right now, we cannot have those sports, less, the lesser sports as far as transition of the virus such as indoor track, which we have, we comply. So we can start practice with that if we wish. As soon as I get more information, I'll let everyone know, I know everyone's kinda sitting waiting for athletics to be able to start, but right now Cuomo doesn't look like he is changing his position on it, and as long as he doesn't, we just fall under that umbrella and there's nothing we can do. So we're just sitting and waiting. But any, any questions?
What about practices?
Practices, if you wanna start practice, you can do off-season conditioning. You cannot have an actual practice because you can't have any contact, you can't share a basketball for basketball. Wrestlers can't touch each other, which makes wrestling very difficult. So practices can basically just be conditioning if you wish, and they can't, they can't count towards your practices that you need in order to play a game. They would be just voluntary things if you wish to have them, but they're not mandatory.
And I suggested to the section tonight that if they have sports, that everyone wear a mask.
Yup, I have a strong feeling that's gonna pass.
It just puts everyone on an equal footing if everyone does.
Agreed. That's it? Go sit down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, JJ.
When we identified a case of possible COVID a little while, a few weeks ago, we sent the kids home early. In the future, unless there's a need to send them home early, we'll isolate this sick child and send them home during regular time. I realize that sending the little ones home to parents that are working is a challenge for the parents, and unless it's absolutely necessary, we won't do that again. I'm recommending tonight that we hire a coordinator of health services and that be our high school nurse. There's a fantastic amount of work that is increasing, seems daily. The reporting and the documentation that's needed from the district is escalating at a rapid pace. You received a newsletter in the mail, I have to give accolades to Lisa who types it, runs it off, puts it in the boxes to be mailed, and if it wasn't for her, we wouldn't get that newsletter out. There's a parent portal on our website, and one of the things you'll see on that website is our students in the 4th grade, current 6th grade did not perform well on the state testing. And Scott will speak tonight in a little bit on what we're doing to address that. If we have a positive case, what determines how long we close for is the contact tracing. If the student has had interactions with a lot of other students and staff, we may have to close for a couple of weeks to allow for the quarantine time. The last time we had to, not close, but go to all virtual is because we had six or seven staff members affected, and I can't hire six or seven subs. If we had that many subs, we could probably stay open, but that's what determines how long we close for. There's some speculation that with cases rising in New York at the rate they're rising, that the governor may close us and make us all virtual as a state director. We know the city is looking to do that, and it's rising to the levels of last March. I have an A-OK award tonight for Trey. Trey, come on up. Trey helped another student who in the hall had fallen. He grabbed the student's possessions to make sure that nothing got dirty. He also helped the student to get up. Very nice, Trey. I shake your hand, but we can only do this. You know, we catch kids doing the wrong thing, a lot of times it's nice to catch them doing something special. Nice job, Trey. Their goals have been established for the school district for the year, and the board will get copies of that tonight, and it'll be posted to the website. The air quality reports are in for both buildings. We've doubled our capacity and filtration. I'm looking at additional air quality upgrades using infrared or whatever it's called.
Ionization.
Ionization and, what's the light, the UV?
Ultraviolet.
Putting in UV into the system to take care of the bacteria or anything that's floating around in the system. There are limits about what we can do. You can't put a HEPA filter in a unit designed for a MIR filter because it'll burn out the motor. So we're at full capacity with our current equipment, but we can look at UV and ionization. Did you bring one of those bands, Lisa?
I do have.
Do you wanna explain what the emergency kit is? Lisa took it upon herself to establish the emergency kits that the teachers will take with them during fire drills and other potential problems.
So the safety kit has a few things in it, it'll have war pouches, it'll have bars in it, just in case we have to shelter in place or that we have an emergency, that they will be out of the building. It'll have desks in it, ponchos, bars, water pouches for the kids, so, and a first aid kit, so it'll have all this stuff. So every teacher will get a bag for their classroom, and if we have shelter in place or an emergency, that they will have this in their possession and use it after disposal, in their discretion. So it has emergency on the side.
Excellent idea, and well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to mention that she saved us thousands of dollars, actually, a couple thousand dollars, by piecing that out and putting together herself rather than buying those prepackaged ones. She put a lot of extra work in to save the school a couple thousand dollars. I thank you.
I think that's the end.
Any questions for Dr. Morgano from the board? Thank you, Dr. Morgano. Elementary principal report.
So I'll do my best to speak up so you can hear me.
You wanna come over here and sit? Seriously?
Good. And, excuse me?
You wanna come here and sit?
Yeah, I think you can hear me out there, so, I think you cannot hear me or somebody says they can't, let me know. Tina has a presentation that I prepared for the board because Dr. Morgano asked me to provide an overview of our current practices that we have in curriculum and instruction. Our vision and goals that we are working on in this area and actionable items that we are working on in movie district toward these goals. So I thought it was very important to share with the board what we're working on so you have an idea and can share with whomever you wish what our direction is academically and instruction. So Tina is our first, you can go right to the second slide on that. And I wanted to start with a definition of curriculum so you kinda understand what curriculum is, what our standards are, and what instruction is. And curriculum is pretty much a set of, or a collection of lessons that we have in our school with assessments and academic content that is taught in our school. So simply put, it's what we're teaching, and curriculum is the what. How we get the what, it's from our standards. So the state of the north, west, south standards, like the next generation ELA standards, and from those standards, we have a curriculum of things that we teach. And that curriculum is that set of lessons that we use in our classroom to instruct children. So simply put, that's what our curriculum is. If you go on to the next one, you'll see, or maybe you'll listen to me, the current curriculum that we have in our district right now, we have a K-8 social studies ELA curriculum that's provided by Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's for ELA. In 9th through 12th grade, we don't have a curriculum, they're teacher-generated curriculum. So we have not purchased a curriculum for our district in that level. In science, K-8, this past year, we want amplified science. It's a set of lessons that we have in kindergarten through 8th grade, and 9th through 12th, the teachers develop their curriculum that they use. In writing, we're just starting this year an initiative through the Teachers College at Columbia University for the units of study. That will go from kindergarten through 8th grade and in 9th to 12th grade. We're incorporating some of that, but it's not part of the curriculum package that we purchased through the Columbia University Teachers College. Math this year, we're instituting the K-8 program at HMH, Oakwood and Hartford. It's called IntiMath. That's a set of lessons, a curriculum that we're putting forth for K-8 and 9th through 12th. Then teachers now currently develop their curriculum that they use in math. And then art, music, PE, health, they're all teacher-developed. They have a set of standards, but we rely on the teachers to develop the things that they teach in their class to meet the standards that New York State has put on. So our areas of focus, we can see a little set of glasses there, what we're looking at is it's really important that our goals align with what we wanna have happen in curriculum. So we're looking for curriculum that matches our vision. We're looking to provide professional development to staff on how to implement this curriculum, and we're making sure that our curriculum is both horizontally and vertically aligned. So it's really important to kinda understand what horizontal and vertical alignment of curriculum means. You can go on to the next slide. A little knowledge about that. Horizontal alignment, and the best place I can really put out an explanation about this is in, let's say in 3rd grade, we have two teachers. In essence, we're saying if our curriculum is horizontally aligned, both teachers are teaching the same thing at the same time. That that set of curriculum, those topics are being taught at the same time by the teachers and we can do assessments for them. Vertical alignment pretty much says that what we teach at each grade level builds upon what is supposed to be taught the next year. So that vertically, our alignment moves up and down. And in Eldred, until we had a set of a curriculum that we would follow, we're not quite understanding, is it the curriculum that we're teaching? When we come back and we get results from our Regents exams or results from our K-8 assessments? Is it our curriculum that's faltering, or is it something with instruction that's happening? So now that we've started to look at making sure that our curriculum is really stepped forward, both horizontally and vertically aligned, then we can look at, are we making the strides that we need? Instruction, a little different than curriculum. This is how you teach children. Instruction is the act of educating and giving steps that must be followed. So the curriculum says you must teach number fluency. The steps to get there are the lessons and how teachers teach number fluency. Do they teach children to count 1 through 10, and then by 10s to 20s to 30s, the hundreds, how they do place value? Those lessons that are put forth tells us the instruction that teachers are doing. And it's really important because when our curriculum and our instruction go hand in hand with each other, our results should continue to rise, our positive results for children and that learning expectation that we have. Moving on. So, the next slide talks about instructional practices. So we know in school, when we instruct children, that how teachers teach, some children learn by reading, some children learn by listening to an adult, some children need to see the things happening, some children have to have project-based activities. And the teachers we rely on is to kinda give them a overview of each one of those areas so that we know we're meeting the needs of children when we teach lessons to them. We provide remediation to children. If they didn't get it the first time, what did we do? Did we just give them the same lesson again, or did we do some remedial activities for children so we understand what they have missed? And the last thing is looking at engagement. That's teacher-to-student engagement and student-to-student engagement. So those are some goals that we have put in place for our instructional practices, how we teach children. So I put another focus area. One of the things that we wanna have in our goals here in Eldred, Dr. Morgano has worked really diligently about looking at, we wanna make sure we have quality delivery of the curriculum. So we have quality teachers that are teaching children. We wanna make sure we have tiered levels of support. We meet the levels of the children, and if they need assistance, we're able to do that. We differentiate lessons, that's back to what I said, some children learn differently. Some by doing, some by seeing, some by reading. We have an inclusion model where we're including all children within the activities, and we make decisions based on data. So that has been something that we're really pushing for this year in our RTI model, our response to intervention. The next one talks about who Dr. Morgano is. Our academic vision for our district is provided by the superintendent of schools. He is the instructional leader. He's the one that shares with principals, teachers, staff, which direction we're heading in, and tells us our vision and what the things we need to accomplish. That was the goals that you see as a board that we worked on, came from Dr. Morgano sharing what he believed was important for us and what areas we need to work on. The next one is the curriculum instruction coordinator. This person is responsible, that's been me this year, to do some implementing of his goals, of his vision that he has. So he's come forth with a vision, said these are the things that we need to work on, and he and I and Tracy and the staff have said, to meet that vision and those goals, here's some things that we need to do. So the vision that, and some of the goals that we've started to work on this year, these four, and each one of these could be a presentation in itself, and a list of guidelines. We talk about response to intervention. Those are our children that are not meeting the levels that we've set up in classroom for instruction. They're the ones that, if we're expecting them to get 80s on tests from our instruction, they might be getting 50s on tests. So we look for levels of remediation or response intervention techniques that we can put in place for them. And the second one is inclusion at the elementary school. Right now, we do not have inclusion model at the elementary school. Our elementary school is what has a pull-out model. So children that need services through special education go to a separate location for those services. And we feel that they would best be met in the classroom through an inclusion model where you might be able to, instead of bring the children out of the classroom, bring support into the classroom. Our writing workshops that I talked about last month at the board meeting and our math implementation. The actionable items that I have on the next slide talk about what we can do. These are the things that the board did for us. We're seeking assistance from our experts. So we hired outside consultants to look at our RTI model. We hired outside consultants to look at our curriculum for math. That's Ms. Wheeler is doing the math. The RTI is Dr. Miller. We're evaluating our procedures and processes. We're using data, and we're looking to make sure that our programs are vertically and horizontally aligned. And that's K or pre-K all the way through 12th grade, that those goals are set up. And it's really important to do this, and I appreciate the board's support for everything that you do to support academics here in school because without that, we can't work together as a team. We need to be a team, we need to have teachers on board, we need to have administrators on board, and we get those actionable items and that vision from our superintendent of schools. And that's very important to kinda understand that the vision comes from the superintendent, but we as a team work together. So I kinda sold a little thing about teamwork. If anyone pulled away from that egg, it would fall over, it might not break, but it would require a lot of other people to get together to put it back up so we can work together. And then my last slide is, we wanna move in the right direction. As a school, as a district, from pre-K, when parents wanna come into our school, we wanna make sure that we have a set of academic standards that parents and children and adults and the community can be proud of, that when a child graduates from Eldred, they have met the standards that we've put in place, and there's rigor and expectations that they will be successful citizens in our community. So I did as quickly as I could to kinda hit the areas that I thought were important for you to understand as a board. And for the presentation, I thank you for listening this evening, and if you have any other questions, I'm here to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
What measure are you intending to use to measure success for horizontal and vertical alignment?
Right now, we have STAR assessments that we're using, but we've been talking about utilizing another measure to look at our goals that we're setting forth, are we meeting those standards that we have in place? So we use STAR assessment as a district from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade to look at both math and ELA. And a couple of people have suggested some other things, but right now, one of those, you have to understand our assessments are tied to teacher evaluations also. There's a component that ties the two together, so we have to understand what we're going to do to move us ahead.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any other questions for Mr. Kreb for the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Secondary principal's report.
Just a couple of things. I just wanna say a big thank you to Eileen Gunther. This past Tuesday, she dropped off winter coats for kids, and these coats will be distributed next week. I really appreciate, we do really appreciate Eileen Gunther coming out, dropping off the coats for our kids, so that they will be distributed next week. The other thing that goes along with Mr. Kreb's presentation, as we know, Eldred Junior Senior High School is on the targeted schools for improvement from the state. So they have mandated that we send out surveys to three groups, instructional staff, non-instructional, and parents. These surveys will be going out next week to the three different groups for each building. So we have to do this in the fall, and then we turn around and we do have to send out surveys in the spring. And it goes along with RTI, and it goes along with the inclusion, all the things we are trying to improve upon. And the purpose of these surveys is to help us plan and establish those goals in our action plan for the spring and then also the 2021, 2022 school year. So you will be getting those via text, email, school messenger. There's lots of different methods to send out, but parents will be getting them, non-instructional staff, and then instructional staff. Along with that, and again, it goes professional development at the junior senior high school. The writers workshop for ELA teachers is underway, and we are gonna continue working with Eileen on that. And then we also have an RTI leadership team. We met and we developed an action plan in order to develop and implement a strong RTI program, MTSS program, which is that response to intervention for the district. So that we have started and we're working on our action plan. The one thing we did get this week, on November 5th, NICE had issued a memo to our school districts stating that the January 21 Regents, administration of the Regents exam are canceled due to the ongoing impact of the pandemic. So if, if children were to take the January Regents, they will now be asked to take the June Regents. They did not mention this memorandum about the 3 through 8 state assessments or the June Regents. This was just for January. We've also been doing a lot of virtual college visits. So for my parents, the early admission deadline for SUNY schools is November 15th. So students have been meeting with college representatives, they've been meeting with Ms. Garen to make sure their applications are completed. SUNY Sullivan representative came and met with our seniors in person in a small group, socially distanced, masks and everything to answer their questions regarding the application process. We've been doing virtual college visits with SUNY Geneseeo, SUNY Maritime, Cuyoca College, Mount St. Mary, SUNY Orange. We have Buffalo State coming up, so we are doing virtual college visits. Lifetouch, we did pictures last week and then also today. So student pictures, they have been taken care of for their ID, for the yearbook, and parents took, got advantage to get packages and different things, and staff also took their pictures. Parent-teacher conferences are virtual this year. I have sent out numerous reminds and school messengers, so hopefully parents are signing up. And I've been getting notifications, we do have a lot of parents signing up for those virtual conferences. Google Meet links for these conferences will be sent out next week. And then, again, more reminders will probably still come out, so if you have a reminder, I apologize for getting lots of messages, but I just wanna get the word out. And then we also have coming up some events, CTE, which is our career technical education programs through VOTEX, Sullivan County Bosse's. They're visiting our English classes on the 19th and on December 8th. And that is to prepare kids for the 2021, 2022 school year. It seems far away, but we've already started planning for next year. So that is all I have for my report.
Any questions for Tracy from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Junior Senior High School student report.
I'm on the Zoom meeting. So to start off, Zoom council had a pumpkin carving and decorating contest. Twenty-two people ended up participating, which was amazing. And then Hope Dunning came in first place, Tabitha Smith was... And then Hope Dunning came in first place. Tabitha Smith was in second and Amelia Faber was in third. So congrats to those three students. And then SAD had their Red Ribbon Week, which just ended yesterday. And then for fundraising, the senior class is currently selling Gertrude Hawk and culinary products. And this is fully online, so there's a link. You put in what you would like to order and it gets shipped to your house. So if anybody has any questions or would like the link, you can ask any senior or the class advisors, which is Ms. Padua and Ms. Messina. And then for the juniors, they currently just finished selling their chocolate bars, which might happen again here at the school year. And that's all I have so far.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
District Treasurer report.
I don't know. Can you look? Sit in the center? Hold right here. All right. Um, so I'd like to welcome the newest member of the business office, Janetta McArthur. Uh, she was hired on as our treasurer, um, which means that we have all of our employees for the business offices moving on schedule to be taken back into the district, um, from BOCs. So I think, uh, Janetta's going to make an excellent addition to our team. She's got a lot of experience in school districts and she is going to help us out tremendously in, in transitioning over from BOCs.
Welcome.
In other news, we, uh, received an extra $173,000 that wasn't budgeted for this year. Uh, that money came, uh, Dr. Morgano actually sits on the board for the Orange Ulster Health Insurance Consortium that we're part of. Um, we had a lower number of claims this year and so they voted, uh, there was an option to have some of those excess funds refunded to the school districts who were part of it. Uh, they voted to refund them because a lot of school districts are cash-strapped right now. So we received a $173,000 refund on our health insurance for last year. So that was unexpected money, um, which is good news. Uh, I started with the good news. Unfortunately, there's bad news. So, uh, Andrew Cuomo has decided that he is not going to reimburse us for any transportation-related expenditures after March 1st, uh, to June. Even for the mandated transportation of food and packets to students, that is also not going to be aided, uh, even though it was state-mandated. Uh, so that was pleasant news. That could affect us to the tune of $60,000, so we're still up 110. Um, but, uh, that was a little bit of bad news. On the state aid, that 20% reduction, uh, we were reduced by 20% for the last chunk of money that we got for 2019, '20. They are holding off on reducing the first state aid payment by 20% uh, in hopes that there will be federal aid money. They keep going back and forth on that. Uh, as of right now, that's on hold and there is renewed talks, so there may be some money coming in. As I said, if they cut us 20%, we're still going to be okay. If they don't, we're going to be really okay. So I'm hoping, uh, that they don't and there does seem to be some hope for that, uh, coming down the pipeline. Uh, I was also going to talk about the air quality, but that, uh, Dr. Morgano already spoke about that. We've got train in and Siemens looking into enhancing the air quality even further and we've already greatly increased our capacity. So, uh, that, that's all I had for this week. If you guys have any questions?
Questions for Caleb from the board? Thank you, Caleb. All right. I'd like to thank the newest member to, to the team of Eldred. I wish you a lot of luck. I think you'll enjoy working here. We have a really, really good team here and everybody seems to get the job done. Just stay safe. But thanks, thanks for coming. All right. Public comment on the consent agenda items only.
Uh, this is Sherri Kounds. Can I speak on 8.02 right now? Okay, thank you. Um, at the last board event meeting in October, um, it, it was said that both Tracy and Denise have two to three hours, um, extra hours of work each day um, due to the state reporting. Um, working with Tracy in the elementary school, I just, uh, she goes above and beyond each day. Um, just the backpack program in itself is another job. Um, along, right now, she has her, still her daily tasks, um, you know, with the elementary students. There's small bumps, there's bruises, children soil themselves. She has to take care of that. Um, and now the added concerns with COVID makes her job extremely difficult. Um, I personally, right now, have the largest class in the district coming in. I have 20 children that come into school every day. And Tracy has been an invaluable asset to me. Um, she stops in, she checks on the students, she checks on the supplies that I have. She answers, um, any questions or concerns that I have. Um, and this is not to take away anything from Denise. I absolutely think that she should be getting a stipend. Um, they are the lowest-paid nurses in Sullivan County. And I realize at this time that you are not able to, um, speak on personnel matters. However, I would hope that Tracy could be considered for the extra stipend as well. And I thank you for your time and consideration of this request.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Nothing? Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent items 501 through 503, or 803.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
We'll have a chance to review it. Is there any discussion? From the board?
Yeah, I would have to agree with what Sherri Kounds just said. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll take the vote. Kristin?
You know what? Could we just, um...
I think we have an impasse.
Just what we had discussed, maybe to put people's minds at ease, what we had discussed earlier.
It's a personnel issue right now and it just can't be discussed outside the gun.
Okay.
Vote, Kristin? Huh? Kristin? Yes?
Yes.
I'm good. And I'm a yes. All yeses. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
I had a walk-on motion that did get in if you wanted to consider it for Tessa Raymond. It was something we had discussed, uh, the last executive session. She's been here for, uh, five years and, uh, there was a resolution for Tessa Raymond to change the rate to $15 an hour.
Okay. Everybody's heard?
Pro 14.
Everybody heard Caleb's recommendation? I need a vote. Kristin?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
I'm a dork.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I apologize. I was supposed to get that to, uh, Lisa this morning. I had to get it on the agenda.
Any other new business to come before the board? Public comment, second public comment, any, anything you want to discuss from the public? No? Yeah? Okay. That being said, we need to enter back into executive session for personnel issues. Can I have a, I make a motion? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I don't intend to be any business afterwards. Do you? Okay. So have a good night. Thanks for coming. And be safe.
Thank you.